Joseph, please speak. Jeff Pope, County Economic Development Corporation.
Adam Peters with County Economic Development.
Ed Selfie, South Main. Brendan Sockwell, South Maine. Mike Mayer of South Maine.
Dan, you want to introduce yourself?
You bet. Dan Nimala with South Main.
Lisa Parnell-Roe, Town Administrator.
Thanks for joining us. If I'm new, get going, but I do want to kind of jump into this. I hope for a fruitful discussion. As you all know, I think most of you were in the room in December when we had a similar or a topic on similar discussion, a similar topic before. I came down with food poisoning the night before that meeting, so I quickly passed the buck to Phil and Pat to facilitate, so I'm happy to be here with you all. So I'm going to give just a real brief kind of verbal framing of what the topic had been and how we got to where we are, what the topic is, and then I'm really hoping for essentially a brainstorming discussion with you all. And I'll kind of frame that a bit more. So again, just to kind of back up, a really high level summary of the last few years on this idea and topic of water dedication town. You all probably know this, but I wanted to put it on the table real quick so that we're all on the same page. Starting in mid-2021 is when the town of Univista created and passed what we call our water dedication, original water dedication ordinance. Prior to that time, there was no function in our code which acknowledged and distinguished between a system development fee or tap fee and water rights, right? And so that mid-2021, I think it's June ordinance established this distinction where there's tap fee we continue to have, which actually pays for upkeep and installation of the physical infrastructure to get the water to a building. Then it created water distinction between that and water dedication, which was saying that we need to have the water as an casualty to put into the pipes to get to you. And that can happen either through, either through you bringing water rights to the table or paying a dedication fee in lieu. That's what that ordinance was supposed to do. It said now we have essentially a mechanism on code, make that distinction between tap fee and dedication. And you can either satisfy the dedication requirement by bringing water rights or by paying a fee in lieu. And the fee in lieu idea was really to help the town start to build a separate funding source to acquire water rights and to augment our water rights portfolio. Prior to that time, we had no separate funding mechanism for acquiring new water. So that's mid-2021, right? Moving into later 2021, you all have probably read in detail, I'm sure, the, I think, forty-page Water Resource Master Plan that was published. That's the first time the town has had a detailed understanding of our current water rights portfolio in a dry year scenario. How many SFEs or single-family equivalents can that right or that abomination of rights serve? That's the first time we really had that number in black and white. And that number was twenty-five hundred and eleven SFEs, right, from that Water Resource Master Plan. So starting with that data from then, starting to move forward over the last year, it's been a question of, one, how can we continue to work on acquiring new water to add to that twenty-five hundred number? And two, how are we dealing with water dedication as we start to grapple with that new mechanism we have in our code, right? So it was probably October of 2022 when there was a water ordinance and a water policy, water allocation policy drafted, and that's what kicked off this discussion with you all. And more pointedly, a discussion around if we now know how many taps we can serve with our water rights, how are we dealing with that, both on acquiring new rights and on making sure that what's built within what we have aligns with community values? That was really the basic impetus for that effort. As you all know, the ordinance that was drafted out of that, like November-ish, it proposed a three-year expiration of water reservations, dedication, right? You pay a dedication fee, a final plat of subdivision. That ordinance, the way it read, was that after three years, that water was no longer reserved in our water rights portfolio. That dedication would go back into the pool. So it's not that water went away necessarily, it was taken away, but it definitely was not reserved for that property or that lot. The other thing that ordinance did was create an eighteen-month deadline or expiration of that same reservation idea for building permits, right? You pull a building permit, you have eighteen months to install a water meter, not to get CO, but to install a water meter. Otherwise, that water would lose its reservation and go back into the pool. The other piece of that, so there were two pieces that were put forward at that time, was a water allocation policy. Whereas a dedication tried to deal with how long water is dedicated for, the policy tried to say, what development does town want to see with the water we have left, quote-unquote, and try to create buckets or categories into which we wanted to dip or out of which we wanted to divvy water up for development. So as you all know, I think I've communicated with all of you in some form or fashion since then, the ordinance received a lot of feedback from you all, a lot of feedback from other folks. Planning and zoning commission at their January, mid-January meeting recommended sort of denial or tabling of that ordinance in its current form. Based on that recommendation, staff did not bring that ordinance before the board for consideration. Instead, we brought that water allocation policy, which didn't receive recommendation from planning and zoning commission, forward to the board. The board did, I think it was over the span of two or three meetings, provide some feedback and then adopted the water allocation policy, I think, in mid-Febur. And again, I think I sent all that out to you or it's on my VP. So again, that policy is in place today, and it creates a series of buckets that carve up essentially our available SFE and is going to start to guide how development review is done, right? The intent behind that is to say, well, if we all say we need affordable housing, for example, or we all want commercial development as well, we need to start making sure that our water aligns with that. So that's the intent of that policy. Happy to talk about that policy if you guys want to discuss it, but also recognizing that that's in place. I don't necessarily want to spend too much time next day. Again, we could chat about it at that point. But the reason we asked all of you back in the room today is that that ordinance, that three-year and eighteen-month expiration idea, well, that has been recommended for denial. The board has expressed a very strong desire to have some sort of mechanism in our code to mitigate the risk that they perceive of having developer XYZ plat and dedicate a bunch of water for a subdivision and then not build. In essence, what that would do, in the board's perception, would be to, let's say it's a hundred SFE that they dedicate, right? And they don't build for ten, fifteen, twenty years, they just don't build. Somebody else comes to town and says, I want to do this thing that maybe we all really want, but now there's not enough water, right? And so that development, in essence, is not allowing other development to happen because they haven't built. So that's the perceived risk that the board would like to see mitigated. Hit with your butt, hit yourself. So instead of, and I'll get right back to you, instead of staff and/or the ordinance trying to go right, jump into drafting another ordinance, we really want to start from scratch before the pen hits the paper, have a discussion with you all, have a discussion with other stakeholders, take all of the notes and then start to think about what an ordinance might look like. So that's the purpose of today. It's to say, one, I've just done a little bit of level setting on how we've gotten here. And then, two, if there is this perceived risk by the board, I want to make sure that whatever solution or mitigation tool is passed eventually, I want to make sure that that has broad input and has the voice of the folks that actually build things in town taken into consideration. So that's really the point for today. I'm going to hopefully be done talking here in a moment after I answer some initial questions. And really, I want to hear from you all, both clarifying questions, but also like your ideas, right? If this is a risk that's perceived, whether or not that risk would actually happen, right? Because we know the risk is perceived. What all would you like to see happen in some sort of new ordinance? And I think we could probably get pretty creative in this discussion to move forward. So Matt, go ahead.
Just clarifying a question. You said the board is concerned once they're planted? Or is it developer XYZ comes in, buys a plant, wants to get going, wants to allocate its water, doesn't do anything at all?
Yeah, it's a great question.
Once they're planted, those are potentially for sale lots, right?
Right.
But I just want to make sure I'm clear on that.
Yep. So the way our code works right now, the only two mechanisms that are allowed. Remember, any of you own land in town today? If it's currently drawing water from a water meter, town is legally obligated to provide you that water. If it's not drawing water from a water meter, town has no legal obligation to provide water if we don't have water. So that's the base legal scenario, right? So our two code mechanisms right now to dedicate water, to have town be obligated to provide you water, are building permit application or final plat approval. So there is no mechanism right now for XYZ developer to come in, buy ten acres of unplanted land, and then buy up associated SFEs without going through the full subdivision process. So de facto, the way that this fear or this risk would happen would be a subdivision is fully planted, they pay dedication fee in lieu, and then nothing gets built.
No infrastructure is built.
No infrastructure is built, and therefore no building permits come in.
That could like perform on space concerns.
Yes, performance-based concerns.
Joseph? Is it that the town is unaware of where to acquire more water? Or is it that the town doesn't have the capital to purchase more water?
It's not that we're unaware. I guess the town is not unaware of how or where to acquire more water.
So it does exist. Is it a capital constraint?
It's both, I would say it's both capital and time constraint, right? For example, if town, it's public information, we just purchased the Bray Allen water right a few months ago, right? Well, that's a raw water right. It needs to go through water court. We have a rough guess of how many SFEs might come out of that, pretty broad range. But we won't know for two, three years for sure while that goes through water court. So in that case, we require more water, but we need two or three more years to get that into the pipe, so to speak.
If there was more capital available, but the town, they have identified multiple sources that could be acquired if the capital was available, or is it, is it more, is it, yeah, is it not available or is it not capital? I guess I'm not clear on that.
Yeah. I'm not sure I can answer that detail. Like, I guess to be, you know, we're also working on a variety of other acquisition strategies. And it's sort of capital related in the sense that we don't have a small team of folks on staff or in consult paid relationships that are focused one-hundred percent only on those strategies.
On acquisitions.
So that's a piece of capital that I think matters a lot when we talk about, oh, how much time is being devoted every single week to this one thing? Not enough, right? So that plays into the time aspect. But the other side is our capital water fund, which has historically had a very, very high point, but we're also expending more funds than we ever spent, right? Water plant expansion, infiltration gallery expansion, acquisition of new water rights. So I don't know enough about the details on our water fund to be able to say, like, do we have enough water to buy another water or enough money to buy another water right today? I don't know the answer to that.
Joseph, on the water allocation policy that was just adopted, that's what outlines the SFEs being allocated by final plat or building permit? Is that where that language actually reads? And I guess I'm going to ask is, is that indefinite right now, like, per the language of that policy? It was the secondary ordinance that started the time, timeframes. Am I just understanding that correctly?
Yeah, so to back up, the dedication ordinance was created in 2021. It's what creates a mechanism that obligates town to provide water to development. And that, the two triggers for that are building permit or final plat, right? So since 2021, if you do a final plat, you get approval and pay your water dedication fee in lieu, town is saying we are obligated to provide that property, that project. And that is indefinite today, right? So if a project gets approved today, there's no mitigation for the perceived risk or fear that you will never build. You have got, well. The policy doesn't create legal obligations as much as it clarifies how town makes the decision about which projects get that water, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. So ideas, thoughts, questions on? Again, I want this to be a fruitful discussion that offers up solutions or offers up ideas that can be worked on and create solutions. Because I anticipate that new ordinances and new codes are coming, right, comes to water dedication. I really want them to be crafted with input from the beginning, if that makes sense.
I'm a little scared to, I guess, say this because I don't have it clear in my mind yet, which is, I do, right? Start spewing it out.
You're the only one that does that.
It's the town thought about, kind of like a phasing incentive. And what I'm kind of getting at there is, let's say, let's say I walk in and I've got a three-block subdivision. And I'm incentivized maybe through the process by willing to take down ten, not take down, but to start actually going vertical on ten of those units in phase one and not tie up the other thirty. But I get some incentive to do that. Like a developer incentive fund or something. Not to slow down development, that's not really what I'm getting at. But if I can only swallow ten and I don't take all forty, what incentives might be there for me to be willing to do that?
So in essence, pay or incentive, whether it's financial or otherwise, to not dedicate all the water upfront? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Not go in for my second ten until the first ten are ready. And that may not be the greatest example. Again, I don't really top through it in my head.
Sure.
Joseph, I think if I, I think, I just want to make sure everyone's clear. Like, I'm just trying to imagine how this works. So we all have subdivisions and we all go in and we do the engineering and the entitlement process. And we all spend years of time and money getting the project going. And then we get approved, we pay our fee in lieu. We put in infrastructure, we put in streets, we start selling lots. And then boom, we're out. And so there's vacant lots that have been sold to end users that are unbillable, so they're not financeable. You've got a bunch of built streets that you're maintaining that don't have houses on them and that aren't being used. And so we have to maintain, plow, police, all of these streets. And it seems like, I mean, I'm just trying to imagine a scenario that's not a complete meltdown on every level. And so with that in mind, like, you know, it takes so long to do a subdivision. As, I mean, and obviously, I'm not very, I'm sure someone else could do it faster than me. I'm not the fastest guy in the room, but it takes a long time. And there's markets involved, and there's interest rates, and there's supply chain. There's so many factors that are out of everybody's control. And I think if you were to introduce that level of uncertainty for everyone, I think you would probably have the opposite effect than ordering taps. I think you would kill investment. And I think there's, so I think certainty is the only solution when it comes to long-term investment. Certainty is, we all have to have certainty. And I guess rather, I've heard this term, reporting taps. However, if a developer or a property owner or someone is willing to come in and say, I want to secure my future now. And I've got money and I'm ready to go. I want to, I want to work with the town. Let's put our resources together and get water so that we all have it. And anyone that wants to help pay for that and help secure their own water. So that was kind of the heart of my question. If it's out there, but we all just need to put our wallets together and go buy it, I know I would buy water if it would give me long-term security on my land. And I imagine other people would do that here, too. So, but if it's actually not available, that's a different question. So that's why I'm not familiar enough with it to know. But I feel like that's the first question because we could kind of avoid a lot of these policies if we actually all just had our water. And there was enough. And I don't think we're talking about a huge amount. We're talking about maybe thousand, two thousand taps, hundred acres, two hundred acres of a ranch that we all put our heads together by. And then boom, we have a real solution, not a policy solution, a waters that come and run down the river and into the pipes and into the houses solution, which is, I think, that's the solution I would like to see personally, if that's possible. And I think if we put our energy towards that, we could all, I know I would put money towards it. So I'm not, I can't speak for anyone else in this room, but we all have a lot on the table at risk here. And I think let's try and irrigate our town and get enough for everyone.
Yeah. And I guess I would just throw out, at this moment, I'm not sure it's an either-or. I don't think we have the luxury of the either-or. I think we have to do both, right? And I think part of that new acquisition strategy question, and the reason that it's hard, one, for me to answer, obviously, I'm a novice when it comes to water rights, but two, it's like, we already have a fee in lieu mechanism. And part of it is a question of like, are we gaining money fast enough through that fee in lieu as a town to make sure we can act appropriately when there are new opportunities available? And if we're not, are there opportunities to partner up?
Well, I think the question first is, what's available and how much does it cost? And then we all know how much it costs. I mean, if only anyone knows.
If you're planted, you can just pay the fee in lieu right now and secure that, right?
Right.
If you're planted.
Right.
And then you're guaranteed.
With a building, with a building permit application.
Oh, you have to have it at the same time.
And that's that eighteen month. And then you have eighteen.
And that one, and that's not adopted.
No, today, there's only two months. There's only two months today.
So if this gets adopted, that's kind of the question, right? We have this out here, the eighteen-month, three-year expiration. But we're under their ordinance right now, that if you're planted, you can go get, you pay the water fee in lieu of, right? Oh, hey, supersede that.
We're recreating that today, correct?
I would love to not have a hard deadline expiration in our code. That's what I would love to see. There's also, one, recognition, I'm not the decision maker. Two, it's not helpful to say, well, we should just not do anything when the decision makers have, you know, justifiable or not, a few of them want to create a policy around. And so I do think that there's benefit to saying, how else can we think about parameters? Maybe it's not a hard and fast three-year expiration, right? Maybe that's not appropriate for reasons that you just mentioned, Jen, and others. But what are the other ways in which we can creatively think about metrics or a system that would provide certainty to the developer and mitigate the perceived risk of having land and water tied up with no developer?
What would a bank say if it had an expiration on? No question.
Looking for some trigger sheets today?
Right.
We're a risk reward business. I am even worried about the eighteen-month piece, knowing how many people come in and buy land to build on when they move here in X number of years. Why would any bank want to find that, non-even on the development, just on private law? So I mean.
It always takes twice as long as you think.
Yeah. So I mean, it would significantly change how we would view land and land.
Because there's no guarantee that there's a saleable end product. And I don't think anybody wants the bank to own all the land, but it can't sell.
Is there a mechanism, I know you guys are working with Upper Ark on kind of a bigger picture for more taps, there'd be a mechanism for either single lot owner or developer to buy some augmentation that would guarantee that water to be there, even if they wanted to wait ten years before they built?
Yeah, it's a very timely question. So the, today, our code says water dedication fee in lieu or water rights. Doesn't talk about augmentation certificates at all. So the trustees are actually having, welcome, a work session on Tuesday, the twenty-eighth of March, specifically on augmentation certificates, to try to get a better understanding of that tool in itself and understand how it's both different and in many ways a good diversification tool to our water rights portfolio, with the hope that they would start to gain comfort with that tool, period. The next step would then be saying, does this tool play a role in our code alongside water rights or water dedication fee in lieu? To that end of saying, under what circumstances, where and how might town accept augmentation certificates from the upper arc instead of fee in lieu and instead of dedication or water rights? So that's a question that we're exploring. To be honest, though, today, it's only being explored for developments that might happen outside municipal boundaries, but that might want to use the municipal water system. It has not been discussed as like an old-town lot owner, next to elementary school, wants to buy upper arc certificates. That idea has not been discussed.
It just seems like if that could go through, I know it's a timing issue again, but if it could go through water court once, it seems like that could be a streamlined in the future scenario. I have no idea how much water Upper Ark has left. I mean, you know, they're going to be limited at some point, too, but.
I've got a question, Joseph. So I want to start with kind of, you know, what's the board's intent? What's the problem that they're trying to solve? Have they specifically dictated that we need an ordinance? It seems like the problem they're trying to solve, they want to make sure this water gets put to use. Is that a fair assessment?
My understanding, yes.
And if the people that in this room are not here responsible for putting that water to use and our lending partners are saying that an ordinance will prevent us from putting some water to use, is there still an opportunity to guide the board, say, this is going to have the opposite effect of what your intent is? Or are we past the point of no return where we have to come up with some sort of ordinance, even though we believe it might be kind of productive to the actual intent? And it might be a short-term solution that I think we all know might be better solved by supply.
Sure.
And if this meeting was directed toward, you know, two hours of us putting our heads and wallets together and, I heard Jet's point earlier, looking for water, is that the right long-term solution? And again, or I know it's not up to you entirely, but are we past the point of no return there?
Well, I'll just offer that an ordinance is just a local law, right? And that ordinance, so the existence of an ordinance, and hopefully you guys can agree with this statement, that the existence of an ordinance in and of itself, just an ordinance, doesn't necessarily mean that we're having a detrimental or positive impact on anything. It's just a set of rules. So I think it's what that ordinance says that's really important. So will there be an ordinance passed? I can't speak to that. I really don't know. But that ordinance could or could not contain like a three-year, eighteen-month expiration, right? That would be the piece that we've heard would really be detrimental to the certainty that both financiers and developers need. So just because we might try to pass an ordinance doesn't mean it would contain the specific deadlines that the previous one under consideration contained, if that makes sense. So it's not necessarily like, no, we're not going to, we're not going to try not to pass an ordinance. An ordinance may be the best tool to do whatever's decided upon, but what that ordinance says is what's really important. The ordinance may be the best tool to do whatever's decided upon, but what that ordinance says is what's really important.
But I think to piggyback on that a little bit, it'd be helpful to understand, you know, you've been more into those conversations. What are the major concerns for us to come out of here with some ideas? We need to understand what their concerns are and then try to address those concerns. We may not agree with them, but we have to have some ideas to come out of here with to be able to address those high level concerns that. So I think it'd be helpful to understand what those are, you know, thirty thousand of you.
Yeah.
Performance based and order mentioned there.
Yeah, and I'll let Lisa fill in the holes.
Yep.
Yeah.
I would like to jump in here. So, um, you know, I think the baseline concern obviously is that with such a limited amount that we know of, that we can expect at this moment in time. And if someone were to be come in, a developer were to come in and have four or five phases to their project and we were to allocate all of that water to that one developer, then there's nothing left for the other other developers that are looking for that. So it creates a conflict amongst you all, which is one of the reasons why we're really sitting here asking you, how do we solve this problem? Because there is no guarantee that we will get more water. I hope we do. We have lots of, we've got lots of things in works. But the, the fact of the matter is, we aren't guaranteed that, just like everyone else isn't guaranteed that. And there's water court and it takes a long time to do those things. Right now, we have, what's the number of of that we have today, Joseph, of expected developments and whether there's an application or not on on the books?
Um, I mean, the the dashboard that the board recently asked, the planning department put together. It tries to say like, here's the conversations we've had with folks and not necessarily applications. It's about four hundred and eighty SFE that we're aware of coming next one to five years.
And those, that's, that's with or without an application. So but we know that it's all coming down the pipe. And so if we only right now have, what, I think it was two eighty, the last time I checked, somewhere around there, then obviously. So I think. Go ahead. Yeah, so, um, so the the basic problem here is, you know, we want to make sure that it's fair. I think the trustees want to make sure that it's fair, that no one could come in and gobble up all those and just hold on to it because they're not exactly going to be implementing phases three, four, and five, or or six or seven, depending how big their project is. Um, but there are other developers that have things that are going as well. So I think it has to do with being fair to development as a whole. That's what I think it has to do with, and that's what I see. And and I do believe that they're preset on there being a safeguard put into an ordinance. And so, you know, it it's something that will happen. And so we want to get your feedback so that we can come up with something that will be acceptable for everyone. So, you know, I think the last ordinance had three years on it as a as a you must build within three years. And that was something that was proposed to planning commission. And planning commission was not accepting of that. So we know that that's, that they understand the situations that you're all in as well, which we do as well. But we can't give you something that we don't have.
Be able to answer that question and answer well. We need to come up with a metrics, not just how many are in that or not, is what is our current build rate? So if we're gonna answer our current build rate, even, you know, grow that by five percent or 10% a year. Then that would give us an idea of how much we have left and we need to acquire more. And then that's kind of creates your timeline. But if you don't get to say four hundred and eighty N right now, we don't have a water test for that. It's what is our growth rate, our build rate? In conjunction with that.
Yeah, I'll hear from you real quick and I can come back and answer.
Well, I was just gonna say, if we know that three isn't the answer, then do you look at something that's more like five to seven? And then give the opportunity to be able to, once you know what your new water costs, assuming that you have it, be able to buy an extension, making up for what, at least to try and put money in the pot to start. So you've got your money. Hopefully, you're using that initial money upfront with what we know to be true. And then try to do a percentage based extension or, you know, for more time. And obviously, it sounds like there is gonna have to be a cap on that as well. I don't know if ten or fifteen or what the magic number on that is, but certainly three years is not. We know that's not feasible. That's not doable under any, whether it's a development or an individual.
Like an extension fee that goes into the water.
Right. So if you're asking to buy more time, you know, within reason, you can buy yourself some more time. Assuming that at that point, whatever water that you've acquired after the fact, we know what it costs us today. But we don't know what it's gonna cost us tomorrow or five years from now or 10 years from now. So then you try to somehow, and that's, that'll be a bit of a mystery to all of us. We really don't know. But assuming that that's a cost that is an unknown.
But why would we put in all these streets and sewer lines and water lines and power? And finish all these lots and spend all our time on something that is at a minimum gonna end in Chaffey County Court being completely blocked up for decades or a long time. A buyer buys a lot, then all of a sudden it's not buildable.
But if you're plaid and you're selling a lot, you paid that in lieu fee. So you are guaranteed that water.
Until it sunsets in three or five or seven years.
But that's not in the ordinance.
But not yet. But I think they're talking about that.
Right. So we're coming up with the new idea that it's not three years.
But I mean, I'm just saying, it's still a ticking time bomb.
Yeah, and then that owner that owns that lot could pay the extension fee potentially. Who knows?
Or with the timeline restart when you've sold the plot to another individual.
Then it's on, then it's on them to pay the extension if that was the idea.
For me, it's difficult to have a water ordinance dictated development timeline, especially a water ordinance that's made in a silo with today's market conditions in mind. It's just responsible development is gonna take into account interest rates, absorption rates, and market conditions and a developer having to choose between the water that they've paid for expiring or irresponsible development timelines is really concerning. And at any capacity for any timeline, I know it's gonna be, I've talked to both of our lending partners about this at nauseam. And it's just a total nonstarter. So in my opinion, an ordinance with a time hack tied to it is gonna be a great way to make sure that, you know, we don't run out of water because the town's gonna be the one that has the water because the town will be allocated, won't be able to get the funding that we need, the assurances that we need to go build stuff.
Does anyone think, I mean, I, I mean, this might be crazy thought on my part, but I actually think there's a chance that at some point, there just legitimately isn't any more water.
Well, I think it's gonna become that. And if we don't start spending ninety percent of our time on water acquisition today, we can always convert water rights. We can always build infrastructure. We can always do that. We can't always buy water. Today's the day that we should spend all of our time getting enough water for our whole town so that we don't have to have this fairly horrible outcome that's guaranteed for everyone. I mean, I think about making lots on Main Street fifty years from now because we didn't have the foresight to buy the water. I mean, if it's up to, if it was up to me, I mean, all of our energy and all of our resources should be securing a water future that is sufficient. And then, even if that puts development on hold, now is a sort of a terrible, terrible time to develop. We maybe should focus our energy on acquisition right now because, again, if we can get a ranch that doesn't slip away to Pueblo or Colorado Springs or whatever, it is going away.
Yeah.
Now, now is the time.
Yeah, for sure.
In my opinion.
Yeah.
So are you, are you suggesting that in your viewpoint, you'd be more open to a moratorium from the town on building for a year or two until we can get additional water rights? And have a better feel of where we're at than to implement a policy like this? Because that's what I think.
Well, maybe a moratorium on the pot.
Let me, let me answer specifically. I I think largely we're looking in the rearview mirror here. We we just went through a massive, a massive real estate boom that was unprecedented in history. I think that the conditions are such that the next few years are going to be slower. So I think that the timeline that we're working with actually has more, in reality, has more time than we had before. And I think the town has new tiered water rates that have brought usage down. And I think that we're getting more taps for the existing resources. Um, I think that there, if you were to, I I wrote a letter to Joseph where Dan helped me overlay a timeline of system development with use. And when you, when you put all of our assets into a timeline, I actually think we have a pretty, and Dan, Dan is more of an expert in this, is what he does. But he, he, he helped me see something that potentially we're okay at this for about 10 years. And if we were to able, if we were able to go out this year and buy a ranch and start that process, we might be able to just make it work and have them vote that. And I mean, there is additional, I I know the town doesn't want to mention how many, but there is this upper arc thing happening. There are other things that could potentially allow us to keep moving along, not tell people no, but then also have an aggressive plan that's gonna work in the long run.
Yeah, what Jed's touching on is that the timing is super critical here. So there's a few things that we see and the town acknowledges the water demand per SFE has dropped. And that's the reason the number of available SFEs increased to from some like eighty to four seventy-five or whatever it is. Um, so that's one piece. Second piece is the town is developing new projects. So you've got well three, well four, and the upper arc water that can supply those. One thing with Upper Ark is they can do temporary contracts. So you can even, if the town's certain that it'll be developing projects that'll be online in 10 years, in the interim, um, you can really plug and play water supplies to Upper Ark. Um, their decrees already are approved by the court and getting that approved is pretty straightforward. But the thing that I keep hearing people say is that we're not gonna, you know, a project that has to be done within um, three years or four and a half years is way too short. And I think that highlights that there's this real substantial timing issue that um, that the actual water demands that are associated with an SFE commitment today won't occur for five years or more. And that gives the town the breathing room to aggressively acquire water rights. And there certainly are water rights in the Upper Valley that are available. And there's competition for them, but they're out there. Um, and that, you know, the town's made two relatively recent acquisitions, one slipped through their fingers. It could have been a third, but there's other opportunities out there. And the thing that really concerns me about the, the concept of expiration is it's, it seems like a, um, not, not an admission of failure, but kind of an admission that the town may be able to meet future water demands. And I just don't think that's correct. Um, you know, people develop projects to meet water demands all the time. The upper arc's a challenging place, but there's far more challenging locations that get projects developed. It can be done, is what I'm saying.
That makes the, um, the next meeting on the twenty eighth really important. I would hope that we would, we would see everyone there. It is, it's a work session, so there really won't be much time for, for feedback, but they're getting information. Uh, the board is on the, the certificates that relate to Upper Ark and adding that to our code. Because right now, that's just not an option. So if I'm hearing what you're saying, you believe with that, that it could be better?
I think that's right. I mean, I think the piece that the town, um, hasn't yet looked at is looking forward with expected water demands in terms of SFE and also use per SFE. Um, projects that have certainty that are in the pipeline. Um, what does the town expect that they can meet in the future? And like Jed was alluding to, we just don't see the, um, water supply gap that the town does. Because it looks, we feel like the town's just focused on, um, gallery well only and not considering the other projects that are in fact coming online. Um, so what I'd really encourage the town to do is, in addition to really aggressive water rights acquisition, take a sharp pencil to what are our future demands, what are our future, uh, supplies that we can, we can bank on. I mean, there's always uncertainty in water court matters, but at the end of the day, water court, or water rights do have a lot of certainty. I mean, that is our prior appropriation system. You have a decree from the eighteen hundreds that guarantees a certain amount of water. That's what it does. That's the, that's the whole basis for prior appropriation. So I know water court's kind of a complex topic, but um, I think there's probably more certainty than the, the town may appreciate.
Wait, do you want to jump? I had a thought, kind of like Jeff, I haven't even really thought this through very much, but I think one concept that we could talk about is if you got your right for five years, uh, and then you have an unlimited amount of extensions, but it's cost some level of money that funds into the pot, that gives the developer and banker a feeling of, hey, we, certainty, right? We have certainty. Every five years, we're gonna have to pay more money. And if year fifteen rolls along and you said, hey, I've, I've spent too much money keeping these water rights. I'm gonna sell my property to Jed and he can, he can have it and take the water rights if he can. But if you allow unlimited extensions, it provides certainty, but it also allows the board and trustees that, you know, hey, there is a sunset, a sunset clause if something does fail.
Don't we want to see that timeline that Dan was talking about before we go anywhere? Like, why don't we, why are we so eager to jump into that solution without knowing the true time? Put it on paper, show us year one through 10, number of projects we think, and see if we actually have a problem. Let's see that first.
Yeah, no, I think more detailed modeling is, is actually needed. And kind of to Matt's question earlier, which is related, you know, the, the growth rate is problematic when you look at it from a historical perspective. Um, because it's so all over the map in the last five years that it doesn't, that it, like, we using the last five years of per year SFE growth is insane, right? I mean, you have twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, whereas like fifty, sixty, seventy SFE per year. The last two years have been like twenty, right? Um, so how do you develop a trend out of that? But I do think modeling projects that we have on the horizon that many of you are involved in. That becomes a little bit more useful. And I think the, the question that ultimately will be for the, the board to wrestle with is are they comfortable with including, let's say, Bray Allen that I mentioned, water, you know, needs to go through water court? Are they comfortable with including X number to represent in three years, we're gonna have new SFEs here? That's a policy question that you all can appreciate. Though there's no guarantees, but yes, there are some guarantees. But what's appropriate? And that's, that's one of those things that needs to be.
What I would do is, you know, in, say, five years, we need another, however many SFEs, right? At least we have a target, to your point, we have the data, we have a target. Okay, now we put our heads down today. Because we know, we think we know it's gonna be, we're gonna do another three hundred SFEs or whatever in five years. Right? And then we start opening our walls. We have a target number.
Yeah, exactly. Well, as I say, let's, let's say that did happen, Joseph, and and if we hit a spot where there was a gap. At that time, there could be a moratorium if you actually run out for a year or two or three until it's happens, right? So I feel like to, in order to not let that happen, we're gonna just self inflict now. Um, whereas I think that there can be, there is a reality of the situation where, you know, if water court goes south or something happens. Yeah, I mean, you can't have total certainty. But to Dan's point, the way they look at this is you have a, a right and you have a historic irrigation. And your engineers can give you fairly good estimate, you know, within a range. If those numbers were applied to our overall, I think we would all know, are we actually screwed or is it better than what you all think? And I, I've never seen any of these numbers, so I don't know how many taps we're getting from Upper Ark. I don't know what the acreage or the water rights associated with acquisitions are, timelines. I haven't seen that information at all. So I think if that was put all onto a thing, we would all then get to say, yeah, it is as bad as they're saying. Or you know what, it's maybe not as bad as they're saying. Um, especially given the soft market.
And to that end, I mean, the board. And to that end, I mean, the board has asked for an additional work session. You know, for having an upper arc augmentation, you're doing a work session, I read a lot, really heavy based in education. So our water attorney, town's water attorney will be presenting, a water advisor will be presenting, upper arc will be there presenting. There's a request for an additional work session, probably jointly with P and Z around more of this topic, right? Um, where I think having a model that we're presenting and walking through might be a really good basis for that work session. Um, so I think that's great. The one thing I will bring up, and I think I credit Matt with this idea originally, um, is what if we were to move away in discussions or contemplation from a year-based expiration? And have it be a performance-based ex- expiration? And what I mean by that, not only have this sort of half baked as well since you and I's conversation the other day, but timelines are, we all know it, they don't get hit, right? For a whole host of reasons. Um, but it's a fear, it's a perceived, it's a perceived risk is somebody dedicating a bunch of water and not doing anything with it, therefore precluding others from using that water to beneficial use. If there's demonstrated performance, and we would have to, right, I want to hear from you what that means.
Right, that could be the extension.
Should there be a timeline associated other than a timeline for performance, right? And, you know, in the building permit world, you have this, right? Every six months, if you don't have inspection, your permit expires and you gotta apply a new. So what would happen if that similar idea were applied to this realm?
Project.
Yeah, yeah, subdivision around.
Not per se that particular law.
But it might be a mixture of both public improvements focused and lot focused, right? I don't know what the mixture would be or how that would work, but just strikes me if that is the risk that it truly exists. Show demonstrated performance.
So developer sells to an individual person and that individual person sits on that. After the goal for sale, it is guaranteed. It goes into the system, I mean, I think it has to be, you know, finance, financing.
Yeah, it'd be somewhat tied that to the public improvements or, or something. Then, yeah, town has accepted this stretch of public improvement. You know, the, the streets, then maybe, yeah, it is dedicated, I don't know. That's kind of what I was moving to.
Yeah, there's probably some mechanism you can build into your SIA um, to track it. I mean, everybody's somewhat familiar with that, so kind of enhancing upon that. Uh, I definitely see a little bit of concern on the secondary user having a time limit, just because that won't work too well, especially depending on who that sales pitch is to.
That's the word for the developer either.
Right? But I think that, I think the hard part still is like, like for, if you're in kind of that subdivision development, you're probably going to continue for going forward. But I think the hard piece with like a, you know, what's going to be meeting the bar of, you know, demonstrating progress is, you know, if interest rates go up like they have this past year, like four to five percent in a matter of six months and you know, the sustainability of your product just went a little bit tighter. Um, you know, so what's, what's that definition going to be?
Cause yeah, the definition's going to be hard. That's where I almost think the fee, the, the fee extension we tied into the modeling that would then drive, okay, what level of fees would we need if we went the extension route to get confidence that we can, you know, find more water? You always have the moratorium option if, if you're running.
One, one thing you might, that could be a, when you have a limit of five years, it's an unintended consequence could be people doing smaller phases. And it would be more work for the town and for the developer and staff and everything, just because you'd have more applications for a bigger project. It's nice to get a runway so that you don't have to constantly back in process. It's things better for everyone.
Joseph, I'd be curious to get your perspective on kind of where, cause I mean, it sounds like, not to generalize, but there seems to be general consensus on like, we're kind of questioning some of the, basically the starting point here. Um, so I'm curious, like, i- is the board thinking about this in their mind? It's like, there is going to be some sort of restriction now, it's just we're figuring out what it is? Or are we still in a phase where like, if there's a case to be made that maybe there's not a restriction per se from like a timing perspective? Like, is that still an option or is it, at this point, we're just deciding what that restriction looks like?
But my perspective, and you can jump in, is that it's a bit of both. Um, and I think that, you know, more detailed modeling and uh, work session to dive into this topic may help move the conversation one way or the other or, you know, forward to the next most productive step. But I, there's been a strong desire expressed for you, a new rule.
They're pretty, they're pretty solid on wanting an ordinance for this. Um, but that's exactly right, Joseph. I think that the more that we educate them, it's such a broad uh, and thing to try and learn all the aspects of water rights and how it affects development and how it's, there's just so many players involved in this. You think it gets really, really, really difficult for them to, they may see it just from one side and not the other. You know, we're trying to give them facts from all sides. Um, but yeah, I mean, that's, that's sort of why we're, again, having the meeting and, and giving them feedback from, from your perspective as well as um, the banker's perspective. Um, and different ideas that would be, that, that you would be open to.
Yeah, and I think part of, part of that. Yeah, part of that education process honestly might be like playing out this scenario of like, what does this risk actually look like? Because I, I mean, in my mind, like, for a developer to come in and buy like enough land and more enough money to get to the point where they actually could take down those water rights and to then just sit on it, like, that'd be a lot of upfront costs to just wait on basically no return, which in my mind, like, doesn't seem like a, I mean, I, I guess theoretically possible, but like, it wouldn't be a very good investment on their side either. So I'm, I think part of that education process might be like just playing out, what is, what does this risk actually look like? And what are we trying to solve for? Because in my mind, it doesn't make a ton of sense that specific scenario being raised right now.
The other thing I'll say is there is some running time. We do know that. And so I would not just force a decision that creates an ordinance is the wrong decision. I mean, even if it takes a year to come up top some creative, take the year.
How long would it take to get a, a report with all of that information? Would that be able to be done fairly quickly or is that?
I think we have most of the data we need. Um, and I think it's, the hesitancy on that would come back to that question of what, you know, we take Bray Allen for instance, for example. What is that range? Um, and given all the legal nuances of that particular case, should we be including that range into that model? Or is it simply a use model? Is it simply a, if we go forward assuming that we have water, this is how we're growing? And this is where we start to find a pinch. I don't know, so I think.
I would count it in so that at least it's, it's there. And even if it's 10 years out and then, and we don't know if it's going to be 200 or 400, you know, put 200 in and you can, you can be conservative. Um, or, I mean, I, I would err on the side of just being accurate, like, hey, you have engineers. Obviously you did an analysis before you bought it because you had some number in mind of what, I assume that's how you value it, because we think this is probably about listening taps. I, I don't think there's any harm in being saying this is not a guarantee, but this is our plan. Um, I think we all have plans that, you know, we, some of them are better than they planned and some of them are worse, end up worse than planned, but at least there's a, you can all see a, a relative thing. And if there is a gap at some point, that's the reality of this.
Overmodel has assumptions, right?
Yeah, so the important part is explaining what your assumptions.
Yeah.
Make it dynamic too, the track that going forward. I mean, bet it out in a year's time, how accurate are we then? You know, adjust it. Uh, but I, I think that has to be, like you said, if we can at least kick the ordinance conversation down the tracks far enough to, let's get to the starting line, this is the data. And then make some decisions.
I'm just curious if, if they saw the whole picture, it would potentially, because I have no idea what the picture is, so it's hard for me to even say what I recommend.
Yes, just to, to add on what Jed was saying, I mean, we do this all the time in water planning, where you say, okay, we're pretty certain we'll get 200 acre feet. We'll just take 80% of that for planning purposes. Um, you know, and you look at the models and there's various la- layers of conservatism and then you periodically look and say, okay, with all those layers of conservatism, are we being too conservative? But it's reasonable to throw some number at any water rights acquisition. Otherwise the, the town wouldn't have plunked down the cash for it. I think what, what I'd love to see an outcome of this meeting is that planning and zoning is able to go back to the town and say, you know, what we hear is that, that the town needs certainty for there to be growth. And so any um, ordinance that results in an expiration of, of taps is going to go and eliminate that uncertain, or that, that certainty. And um, it's going to be a, it's going to really quash growth in the town. And the other stuff we know is that what we're hearing is the growth rates we've seen in the last couple of years are not reflective of the future. And then we know the town's acquiring water rights, developing new projects, and there's probably more runway than is represented by the dashboard. And before the, the town or the trust, trustees make pretty serious decisions that can influence the direction of the town over the next five, 10 years in terms of investment, they should take a really sharp pencil and look at how much water is going to be available to meet likely future demands. And when we're sitting around this table, it looks like the picture's probably better than what's represented by the dashboard.
Yeah, I mean, the dashboard's definitely a snapshot in time, right? It's like total, total, doesn't read the time picture. I think the part of the challenge is just like the last five years are the most challenging to create a trend line from what's on our horizon. Um, thanks to or because of many of you is like we, that lag between what needing to dedicate SFE to when those are actually in service is, is working against us from this standpoint, right? Because we have horizons over the next 18 months that we need to dedicate hundreds of SFE, even though we all know they won't get built out for a certain period of time. And so it, it does force this conversation with more urgency than the reality of when the water needs to flow. And, and I think going back to this idea, that model that needs to be represented somehow. And yet, we don't want to be approving subdivisions where there's not 100% guarantee of water. So it, it, there's just that dance of what's our growth rate? And there's sort of the tap connection growth rate. You know, looking like this and then it's going to start going, right? Um, and then there's the SFE growth rate, which right now is looking like this and then it might plateau a bit, right? Um, so how do we reconcile this to in our code? Um, and with policy is probably the crux of the question or one of the questions.
So overall, it's all parties need certainty, the banks need certainty, the developers and the town on how this is all going to look. So we got to find that little ground.
If I were the town, I would need to know what that runway looks like to decide if we need an ordinance. And then when you have that runway data or projected runway data, then you can figure out. Cause I think us throwing out random milestones right now without that data, I just don't know how productive that is. If I were the board, I would want to say, okay, let me see how much runway we think we actually have and then figure out, do we actually need an ordinance? Step one. And then secondly, okay, now that we have this data, here's the net ordinance, I need to locate. In the interim, I think like the right solution would be something like a joint task force with developers, planning commission, whoever to focus on the supply issue. Because likely, we know that fixes everything. If they're worried about, you know, some great project coming down the pipe and they're not making enough water for it, more waters. That's the, that's the big answer, right? So I don't know, if I were the board, that would be how I was thinking about this. Gather that data first, figure out if an ordinance is required and then craft an ordinance based on the data.
Figure.
And in the interim, like this is the real problem, like, you know, we need to solve it. We're all here saying we're willing to help solve it.
I think that's an important message too, to the trustees, that the, the people most invested in development in the town are interested in helping the town in acquiring water. Because what I've seen from meeting minutes and so forth is that the trustees have pretty routinely undervalued water rights in the Upper Arkansas Basin. And whenever someone looks in the rearview mirror 10 years down the road at water rights they purchased, they always look pretty cheap relative to how they felt when they were opening their wallets in the first place.
Well, and then I think we're getting closer on that with, with the, the work sessions that we're having on the, on the certificates for the ARC, the upper ARC. Um, and that, that could could potentially provide some more certainty to a certain level or a little more comfort on their part. Um, but I think it's also very easy to, when you talk about water, think of just water for development, but water, obviously we use water for many other things. And, and that's one of the reasons why the buckets were created. Um, you know, to have some for emergencies and, and for public facilities. And there's just a whole gamut of, of uses. You know, and this is just one aspect. So when we're talking about this with you guys, you know, we're talking about it from a development standpoint, but also please remember there's other uses that ha- we have to figure in too. And so their uncertainty is a little bit higher level. I think they, they also want to ensure there's a disaster or something like that, that there's, there's ways to cover that. And so anyway, just my two cents, but that, I mean, obviously this message, and I know that Joseph is taping this as well, that's one of the reasons we thought it would be good for Zoom. Um, so you know, they will obviously have access to watch this as well. And I think we include a link in maybe the next planning report, but yeah. So.
Lisa, if I may, for the, a soundbite for the trustees, every acre foot that leaves this valley is three to 10 homes or businesses that'll never be here. And it's something that I think JV County needs to start taking really, really seriously. Um, keep the water in the valley.
Yeah, would you mind repeating that?
Every acre foot of consumptive water that leaves the valley is three to 10 homes or businesses that'll never be here. And it's probably closer to 10, but that's a fair range.
Is anyone really looking at trying to take our water?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, um, it's, it's 110, I want to again, be respectful of your time. So by no means I want to shut the conversation down, but I just want to make sure if you all have places to be, please don't feel like you have to stay. Um, I probably have another half an hour of uncommitted time and I'm, I'm happy to be here. But just know that on my marching uh, orders is definitely trying to dive into that model. Um, and we'll necessarily be working with our water attorney um, and in town engineer to make sure that we're basing that in reality. Um, are there other kind of final questions or suggestions you all have for the formal part of the conversation?
When we have that model done, are we going to have another working launch or something like this again to kind of come back and do that?
We can totally look at that, I guess. In my mind, the, the board is wanting to have this next work session relatively soon, right? So my anticipation, and, and this will be at least in the mayor's decision, but will be that that work session would happen sometime in April. Um, so my desire would be to have the model done in preparation for that. And I don't know exactly what that work session will look like. Um, so whether or not we can gather before that work session, I don't know the answer to that. But I would definitely endeavor to make sure that you all have access or know when, when and if that becomes made and it's public.
So I have a question. Um, in terms of i- if we are to go after water acquisition as just an idea, put more resources towards that. Um, what does that look like? And, and Dan, I'm sort of asking a little bit of you, because I know you have more experience in this than, than probably most of us. Um, but what I'm imagining is something like the. But what I'm imagining is something like the, an engineer that works with the town would identify. These are the assets that could potentially work, given the town's existing infrastructure and. Systems, and then you kind of identify all of those. And then you systematically go down the list and contact people. I mean, is it that, is that, it sounds pretty rudimentary, but is that kind of? The idea?
That's about right. Yeah, I mean, I think. What does the town need? They need replacement water that's upstream of the Cottonwood Creek, Arkansas Confluence. So that's either reservoir storage or recharge. And that'll allow them to utilize water rights that are located downstream of the town, opens up a pretty big. Range and you more or less peel through and. Look for irrigated areas and identify whether they're privately owned, if they're encumbered by conservation easements or anything like that. And if it. Looks open, then pick up the phone or knock on a door. And that's how water acquisition gets done. That's how. When you drive through South Park and it's all dry, it's all been dried up by Thornton. Carra Springs, Centennial, Aurora, others. That's how all that happened. People went and knocked door to door and bought the water. And I'm not suggesting that JF needs to look like South Park, but it will if. The, the citizens of JF aren't pretty aggressive about protecting our water and. Incentivizing water rights owners to keep the water in the valley, whether that's by sale to towns or. Upper our Conservancy District or through conservation easements or what have you. But the, the water raids are real, no doubt.
Yeah, I would say that I think we're all in unison to some extent of. Imporing the town trustees not to make any rash decisions. There's a lot more data that can come and six months from now, we could still be discussing what the proper ordinance may be. Without any real future clarity yet. And at any point in time, they can say, well. We hit the brick, we hit the end, guys. We have to have a moratorium. Sounds like a twenty one year, we just have a lot of data to gather before that decision is made. Whenever that happens, there's a lot of economic uncertainty. It will cost. Just hope to be patient and continue to work through.
Joseph, could you outline the process from here? Cause I think my concern is I'm hesitant to throw out like. Timelines or solutions until we really understand what that like runway or timeline looks like. And then you guys are then gonna work on the model. I guess my concern is that we then won't be moved back in, or this seems like if there's a desire for or to work through this. Expeditiously, so can you outline? How this goes from today.
All I can speak to is my, my next steps. I, I can't speak to the timeline that the board will take.
What was the twenty eight? There's some meeting on the twenty eighth?
Yeah, on the twenty eighth of March, there's a work session at six o'clock in this room or via Zoom. Focus on augmentation certificates from upper arc. And what role those can play or not in development and therefore not.
We keep mentioning augmentation certificates. For whatever it's worth, I do have a few folks that own some shares out of Twin Lakes that have offered to sell. And we're kind of talking about the same thing in our home. You know, I assume upper arc's talking about Twin Lake shares, but if they're saying certificates, just keep in mind, there may be some other avenues there.
I appreciate that, Jeff. Maybe you and I can chat offline about that.
The, the only other thing I'd add is I think the other risk from, you know, this kind of measure is that. It drives out the local, smaller developers and brings in. You know, the deep pocketed out of town investors who can guarantee the debt and don't have to worry about equity. And so. They need to think about it that way as well, that. You know, who does it impact the most? And it's the people that were smaller phasing projects, et cetera. And then rightly brings in the out of tammers.
Maybe if there's different rules for like your small developers versus big developers to give them some more leeway.
You know, or just make it level playing field, but that allows the smaller players to compete.
And, and I, I will just have a hesitation to try to call things small and large. Given, you know, BB is pretty small. So are we saying that a twenty home subdivision is big or is that zero for those that are a hundred or two hundred? So I'll try to stay away from small and large.
Thank you all very much.
Was it awesome?
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Lisa.